Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Collingswood Board of Education to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cotter?
Present.
Mr. Chu?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Ms. Mello?
Here.
Ms. Rivera? Mrs. Savarino?
Here.
Ms. Sheridan, Celia?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mr. Bowman is absent. Mrs. Kayden?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. There is no executive session or presentations at this time, so we are going to move to Section 4, Committee of the Whole. Do I have a motion to enter Committee of the Whole?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this evening, the main thing that we would like to talk about are the updated COVID protocols, isolation and quarantine protocols, but one quick note to board members, sorry, this is such a strange setup, before we get into those discussions, is that we are filling out, once again this year, the board self-evaluation, board member self-evaluation, so the sooner we do that, the sooner we get the results back, and since all of us have now been together for, this is the second year, thought that could be a really useful tool, so if anyone who hasn't done it before has any questions, please reach out to myself or Ms. Coleman, and we can help you get set up. With all of that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McDowell to talk us through a little bit about how these new guidelines came to me.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. Thank you for those who are watching online. First, I'd like to make a brief statement in context about a growing concern that has surfaced, that we just wanted to send out to our community publicly. So first, we'd like to thank our communities, our school communities specifically for their continued patience and grace as we work together to keep schools safe and to keep them open. This was what was clearly communicated to us time and time again last year, when we had a year full of hybrid learning, a year full of remote, and a year full of half-days. To achieve this goal, we are requesting the community's continued support and assistance in our collective efforts in order to continue prioritizing in-person instruction. Today, I would actually like to bring attention to a growing concern as it relates to our staff. There is a meme that is currently circulating on social media, and most of you have probably seen it in your different networks, and it says, and I quote, "The whole world is short-staffed. Be kind to those that showed up." This pandemic has brought considerable challenges to schools, and employment for caring, compassionate, and competent educators is hard to find in today's world. None of our educators signed up to work in a pandemic, but they show up every day to love, care for, and support our students. From an already stressful job, add the idea of doing it short-staffed, and it's enough to break most people. But our educators in Collingswood and Oakland are not most people. Despite this once-in-a-generation global crisis, our phenomenal educators have shown up and done everything they've been asked to do. However, none of our educators signed up to be bullied, threatened, intimidated, or harassed for doing their jobs to keep schools safe and to keep them open. Our theme this year has been patience and grace, but now is the time to take it a step further by adding back into our language kindness. The spirit of kindness existed in our district long before the pandemic, and we need to remind ourselves of who we are in spite of the pandemic. We are asking for acknowledgement that the whole world is short-staffed, and we are doing our absolute best to meet the evolving needs of our students during this unprecedented period of stress, anxiety, and uncertainty. We are asking for everyone to think about the impact they can make in our school community by being kind. We're also experiencing the effects of COVID-19, especially during a period of very high transmission. We also acknowledge the frustration and the burden that quarantine and isolation poses to families, and please be assured that we are continually adjusting our practices and protocols to meet the ever-changing demands of the virus, as well as the needs of our community. In most cases, our layers of prevention are currently holding steady. However, last week, there were multiple documented cases of viral spread in our schools confirmed by the New Jersey Department of Health. The reason why we did not shut down those schools was based on the layer of strategies that the Department of Health said were critical to us maintaining and keeping those several schools open. Individual decisions to come to school while experiencing symptoms and waiting for test results can contribute to additional positive cases, isolations, and quarantines. Decisions made outside of school often affect our ability to operate safely, and when it does, schools are required to make necessary adjustments in order to ensure student and staff safety. Thank you for listening, and I would like to share some of the components of the quarantine and isolation. The options related to quarantine and isolation are taken specifically from the New Jersey Department of Health, to, based on the CDC updated guidelines that were released on January 6th. Those guidelines that were released on January 6th were not applicable to K-12 schools until the following week. Once they became applicable to K-12 schools, our school district team, our school teams, our administrative staff, as well as our public health advisory group, met in order to be able to unpack the new regulations and then to think about how would we be able to maintain in-person instruction without sacrificing student or staff safety. And what we were able to determine was to give families options. One of the consistent themes that families have communicated is that the 10-day quarantine period, some believe to be excessive, some believe to create a significant burden of fiscal nature on their families, and therefore, we wanted to give families an option to be able to participate in the five-day option. For families that cannot participate in the five-day option for one reason or another, there is still the option to remain in quarantine or isolation. So I think that one of the components that we wrestled with was the masking protocols. The guidance is pretty clear, and I'm going to read the guidance, just so that we're all on the same page. The guidance states that precautions during and after quarantine, continue to wear a well-fitted mask when around others at home and in public through Day 10. For those ending quarantine on Day 5, this would be Days 6 through 10, persons who are unable to wear a mask when around others should continue to quarantine for a full 10 days. We took that to heart. We also made sure that we were not being too rigid, that we didn't allow for some level of flexibility, which is why there are multiple options for both quarantine as well as isolation that still adhere to that guidance. We shared at the beginning of this school year in August that our core challenge this year of keeping schools open was lunchtime. We were very clear. The reason why we stayed in a half-day environment last year was due to lunch. We are at a much higher rate of viral transmission today than we were last year when we only had half-days. The feedback that we received from families was that half-days created an even greater burden on all families, not just the specific families who unfortunately have to quarantine or who have to isolate based on COVID-positive status. So in trying to strike a balance between the needs of our community, the guidance, the challenge that we have being short-staffed in schools, having hundreds, I repeat, hundreds of children either COVID-positive or quarantining due to close contact, we made a call about exercising on the side of caution in order to be able to maintain and keep our schools safe. This was reaffirmed in our weekly conversations with the Department of Health, that because we are being very mindful in our adherence to the guidance, they did not shut down several of our schools last week. I'd like to open the floor for our board members for your questions.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. I wanted to, before I turn it over to other board members, just, because I'm looking at the guidance right now, and one of the things that I thought would be helpful to highlight right away is, can you explain why this does not apply to preschool?
Yes. Currently, preschool falls under the category of childcare in the state of New Jersey, and therefore, preschool centers, even inside of K-12 school environments, are still subject to the 10-day quarantine, the same as daycare centers. So the preschool provisions are unchanged from the 10-day quarantine.
So, at this time, I wanted to, again, this is kind of an awkward way to have a Q&amp;A session with board members, but we'll do our best anyway, to turn it over to any board members, you know, this, clearly, a lot of work went into trying to figure all of this out for our students, but it's a lot of information in a two-page document, and I thought having us unpack some of that could be useful. So if any board members have any clarifying questions or things that they wanted to bring up and ask, this would be the time to do it.
I just want to, here's the last piece that I reviewed, say, after all. The Department of Health, if you can make this shutdown.
So the Department of Health, they have the authority, with a confirmed outbreak, to force the district's hand to shut down. They did not do that, because they said that the other strategies that we had in place were keeping the potential for school-wide outbreak to a minimum, so they were not requesting that we shut down multiple schools last week.
I just have a question about the lunch. So if they, if, after Day 5, so if parents, families opt to bring their children back, they would still have to sign them out for lunch from Day 6 through 10, correct?
Yes.
And that is because we don't have the personnel to watch over all of the individual students who would be coming back? Am I, I just want to make sure I understand that correctly.
So it's twofold. So just for the, for the, for the public information, at any given time, we have anywhere from 40 to 60 staff members that are currently out either COVID-positive, in quarantine, or beginning to show symptoms and awaiting test results. This has really tasked our schools with the ability to operate safely. Substitutes have been at a premium for the greater part of the last two years, so there is no additional option in order to replace those individuals. In some of our schools, they may only have 20 staff members, and if six of those individuals are out, they're not able to fully function. As a result of this, we have been shifting staff from schools to schools, we've been pulling individuals outside of their normal scope of work, in order to make sure that we could keep our schools open, which was our primary promise to the community. So when it comes to lunch, we've already extended ourselves in terms of lunch, there was, prior to this surge, there was already a challenge with lunch supervision, which is why we spread lunches out even further. So every school now has three lunches, so all of the, all of the resources that they were using in order to get to the three lunches for social distancing purposes and supervision are further exacerbated. We don't have the additional flexibility to either add more lunches or add more spaces to provide lunch in an isolated environment, especially when the guidance says that those particular individuals are not supposed to be unmasked at any period of time in the, in public. So, add the human factor. This is no disrespect to any of our staff, but we also do not have individuals beating down the door to volunteer to do lunch duty with children that are coming back with confirmed COVID-positive status, and nor could we compel individuals who do not volunteer to participate in that process.
And then at the middle school and high school level, for that, that, just continuing off of what Mary was saying, they can, they also can't obviously stay on campus to eat, but since they're older and have the ability to kind of do things more on their own, they can leave and come back on their own.
Correct. Parents, parents can give written authorization to the school for their child to leave campus for off-campus lunch during that particular period of time, and then the children can come back at a natural interval so that they're not missing additional class.
Dr. McDowell, I have a question for these new guid, this new guidance. It mentions that the new guidance for the quarantine-isolation options is not retroactive. Can you explain why, the reasoning behind that?
Yes. The, the simplest reason is the Department of Health has advised, at least for the last two years, that we not be retroactive, so all of the mitigation strategies and quarantine protocols are based on that particular period in time, whatever your status was at that particular moment. In terms of the record-keeping, just to belabor the point, just on our secondary campus, we have over 300 children who are either COVID-positive or quarantining. We do not have the capacity to go back and figure out who goes what, when, where, and how. We, our nurses are already maxed out. With the number of daily new cases, notifications, and contact tracing that are happening, we don't have the capacity to go back retroactive, and then it is, it is also not recommended from the Department of Health.
My question kind of dovetails off that. The nurses themselves are keeping track, are keeping lists, how is this being, how's the record-keeping going for something like this?
How or when?
It seems like very daunting task.
It, it, it. So, this board was so gracious to approve the recommendation. The senior leadership team, we met with our education associations, based on some of their concerns about the additional hours outside of the normal workday of contact tracing, communication with families, notifications that our nurses were all doing without compensation. Many of them were working into the wee hours of the night, they were working on the weekends in order to be able to keep up, because there was no other option. So, thank you to the board for approving our ability to provide additional resources in the forms of extra duty pay to our nurses. We've added, thanks to the board's approval, two additional nurses, one of which is a lead nurse that is helping with coordination and technical assistance, and one to help reduce some of the caseload demands, especially on our secondary campus where there are 1,300 children and 150 staff members. So every single day is a task, but they, but they are doing it, because our nurses, they're a well-oiled team, they communicate daily, and then this new position that we are requesting for approval this evening is going to help to also better coordinate that, so that our record-keeping improves.
It's also data-related, sorry. Specific to the new policy around, or protocol around a child who does come back to school after Day 5, who now has to be picked up for lunch because of what we discussed, who's tracking that? Like, who's going to know, especially in middle school and high school, when the students go to different classrooms throughout the day, who's going to notice that you shouldn't be here during, during lunch? Like, how are you tracking that piece?
So the nurses have a, a daily record that they share with the principal every morning about who is or is not supposed to be in the building, and then that is filtered down to the teachers. At elementary, it's significantly easier, because schools are just smaller, but at the secondary level, it, it is a task, which is why they're looking at it on a lunch-by-lunch basis, so between the three lunches, they're working on what that process looks like. Because we're starting with implementation today, all of the schools will have their process fully refined by the following week.
Okay, and along the same lines, while we get that sorted out, let's say, my name is Sarah, I'm, sorry, Sarah, my name is Samantha, I shouldn't be in school, I'm, I, this is Day 7 for me, but my mom forgets to pick me up for lunch, is there a space where I then wait and eat?
So we're, we're not going to put a kid out, we're not going to be so rigid that we lose the compassion around children. Our nurses and our administrators are going to do the best that they can, but our core strategy is to adhere to the strict, the strict masking protocol.
Thank you.
So I have two security kind of related questions, I think, they're security-related. For the, the young ones whose parents sign them out, they do have some, a lot of families have secondary contact people, will those people be permitted to sign kids out if the parent or guardian is not available?
Yes, as long as they, they're on record as being a, a pickup or, or drop-off, then, yes.
So they can update their list in light of this new thing and add people that they might need, and someone is then taking them back in when they come in?
Yes, they go back through, through the office and get checked back in, so that we know that they're back on campus.
Which I think, again, is probably easier for the little ones, so the middle and high school students, we don't scan them in, so are they, who's welcoming them back and checking them?
They, they come back to the main office.
They do go to the main office, they do not pass go.
No, no.
Okay.
Any other questions? So I was just kind of, as I was listening, so it sounds like, well, first, that this is, not sounds like, these are the things that I was kind of taking away from this, that, beginning today, anyone who has tested positive or is deemed to close contact, these are the protocols that they will follow. The school, your, your child's school nurse is your best point of contact when you have questions, your child is developing symptoms, a family member's developing symptoms, you actually test positive, they are the go-to person, would that be accurate to, to get all of the information about what to do next?
Yes.
And to check in, I would imagine, throughout the quarantine time as well, to figure out when they can come back and how to make that work and all of that sort of stuff?
Yes, so our nurses, our nurses are the reason why our schools are open, so I just want to make sure that I'm publicly on the record. Without our, our nurse team, we would not be able to maintain our schools. So the nurses are the ones that are responsible for, not just the contact tracing, but also the return dates. So the nurses are keeping the ongoing records about who is out and for what reason, and when conditions change, they update that on a daily basis as well. They are also the ones in direct communication with the Department of Health, so whenever we get a call or a case, we are communicating directly with the Department of Health, and guidance is coming on a daily, sometimes hourly basis from the Department of Health.
And then, finally, the, not for the, the positive cases, that's a, that's a separate protocol, but quarantine for close contacts does not apply to fully vaccinated students and staff, correct?
That is correct.
So if you are fully vaccinated and you are deemed to close contact, you still are able to attend school regularly?
Correct, correct.
And you're monitoring your own symptoms and that sort of thing?
Correct.
And, I had one more thought, and now it's, it's escaped me, but that's okay. Unless anyone else has anything that, that they wanted to say, I just, I feel like we'd all like to recognize, you know, the, the lunchtime issue is, we, no one thinks it's ideal, and that, that's, you know, it will be a hardship for families, and that is unfortunate, but at the same time, as Dr. McDowell has said, you know, our, our main goal is keeping our schools open, and if this is the way to do it, to the best of our ability, and with the hope that this, this surge will not be lasting forever, that, that, you know, this, this moment in time can be inconvenient, but we can move on from it and keep our, our schools open. So unless anyone else has anything they would like to say, I'm going to, yes, go ahead.
I, I just, I see that for the older children, there's a grab-and-go option. For younger children that are on the school lunch program, what, is there a, still a school-provided lunch option for them?
Yes, they just can't leave campus by themselves.
Okay, so they still go get a grab-and-go and then leave with their?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're currently universal breakfast and lunch for this year. That will probably go away for next year, but right now, any, any child, regardless of eligibility status, can eat breakfast and lunch.
Thank you.
So could I, thank you, everyone, for looking through all that and asking some good questions. Do I have a motion to exit Committee of the Whole? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Moving on to Section 5, future dates and miscellaneous information, I did want to point everyone's attention to a couple of different dates. January 31st is our next vaccine clinic in the high school cafeteria from 3:00 to 8:00 PM. There are some early dismissal days, some for middle school and high school only, some for all schools, so please keep that in mind, and on February 10th, there is a high school principal search community forum, which I would imagine a lot of people would be interested in attending. So with that, we are moving on, sorry, go ahead.
The vaccine clinic is open to non-students also, Collingswood residents and non-students, and are they providing boosters as well as initial shots?
Yes, open to everyone in the, in the communities of, well, everyone, but it's, you know, it's in partnership with Collingswood, Oakland, Woodland, and it, there will be first, second, and booster shots available there. Section 6, routine board business, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 2021 regular board meeting and the January 3rd, 2022 reorganization meeting? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Hold on, I, before we, we're going to move things around a little bit to give our students a chance to get back to, to the work that they have to do, so I'm going to skip sections a little bit and move to Section 9, which is the student reports. If you two would like to, to give us your reports now, that would be great.
Okay, so for academics, the first semester and second marking period ended on Friday, January 21st. There have been a lot of college acceptances for the seniors, Henry Tabak Phillips, New Jersey Institute, and University of New Haven, Jelena Sparrow, St. Thomas University, and Alaska Pacific University, Faith the Shields, Belmont Abbey University, Luke Dethenbach, Drexel University, Reagan Riley, St. Mary's College of Maryland, University of New Haven, and Salisbury University. Owen Ray, sorry, my phone's acting up. Owen Ray, Moncler State University, Madeline Eifey, Kane University, Ava Ostrom, University of Alabama, Rutgers University, Andfordham University, Muriel Celia, University of Scranton, Providence College, and Loyola University, Tassia Tarrant, Stockton University, Newman University, East Charlesburg University, Fairleigh Dickinson University, Maculada University, Monmouth University, Kane University, La Salle University, and William Patterson University, Kenaya Graves, Juniata College, Lincoln University, and University of Arizona, and Whiter University, Hunter Velosim, University of New Haven, Emily Waldron, Sacred Heart University, Christopher Abican, Rutgers University, Victoria Stone, Rutgers University, Penn State University, Stockton University, Louisiana State University, Emma Baxter, William Patterson University, and Anna Scher, University of Delaware.
For our athletics program at our school, the boys' basketball team has gotten off to a very positive start with a record of nine and five so far. The girls' basketball team is currently four and eight, hoping to get that record up more. The record, the, for the wrestling team is actually very impressive, with 13 and one right now, and our indoor track team has had a good season so far, winning multiple events throughout these past meets, including earning the sixth place in the girls' high-jump state relay with a combined score of nine feet. For our extracurricular activities, junior Sarah Hewitt has been elected as the New Jersey Association of Student Council's Executive Member of Special Projects. The girls' basketball team is having a fundraiser tonight at Mulligan's on Woodhurst Pike in Oakland, my family and I did indeed eat our dinner there before the meeting today. And the Collingswood track team is also having a fundraiser tomorrow at Chipotle in Cherry Hill, and the high school theater has started rehearsing for the musical You're in Town, and the show dates will be on March 10th, 11th, and 12th. On the 12th, there will be a matinee and an evening show.
Thank you very much, as always, you are more than welcome to stay, but also, we know you have a lot of work to do, so if you'd like to leave at this time, you are more than welcome. So jumping back now to Section 7, which is our first opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and concerns The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff, members, and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate clarifying communication will go out later in the week, and for more general concerns, they may be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. If you would like to make a public comment at this time, please come up to the microphone, uh, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Hi, everyone. Summer O'Gradyneck, 348 Haddon Avenue. I have three school-aged children in the district. I wanted to start out by talking about the preschool. Because of our district's decision for the preschool, to have, to have a close contact individual stay home for eight days with a negative test or 10 days without one, my family and I are struggling financially. Because of this, it has forced me to take 13 days of unpaid work in the past month alone. I am fearful I will lose my job. My husband and I both do not have the option to work from home, and I know we are not alone with this. If we continue to follow these guidelines, this will keep happening month after month after month. The Children's Hospital of Philadelphia says it's simple. As long as you have no symptoms and wear a mask, you can go to school. I agree with CHOP. They say the biggest concern at this point in the pandemic is the harm done to students who are not in school. This constant shift change, this constant disrupted schedule, is exhausting and is damaging to their mental health. It can happen at any given time. We got a phone call this past Friday morning at 8:13 A M. as we were walking out to the car, my daughter's backpack on and all, and with just a 30-minute notice before school, that's it, she can't go. She can't go for another eight days, just like she couldn't go for another eight days a week before that. In addition to that, her school was closed five days for lack of staff. You can see how it is impossible for parents to go to work. Keep in mind, some of us parents are essential workers. People want to know why there is such a lack of staff? Well, because us parents have children with long unnecessary quarantines. I ask you tonight, what are you doing to support parents who are unable to work from home? The Inquirer, the Washington Post, W H Y Y, all released articles earlier this month stating, CHOP says the health recommendations are no longer feasible or practical for schools. David Rubin, the director of CHOP's Policy Lab, says we need to start to think about COVID in the context of how we think about other seasonal viruses, as COVID is rapidly shifting in that direction. He says this needs to stop as we are chasing... Someone just sent me a text, I'm sorry. He says it needs to stop as we are chasing a milder disease here. CHOP is for mask wearing, but to drop all asymptomatic testing for both staff and students, and lowering quarantine lengths to prioritize in-person education over the risk of a largely milder Omnicron variant. The hospital says students and staff who test positive are allowed to return to school five days after symptoms began, not positive test date. CHOP says those who are close contacts with a positive individual not in their household, which is what I'm stressing mainly about tonight, should be staying in school as long as they are asymptomatic and masked. CHOP is not saying this applies to only those vaccinated. But my preschool child who was a close contact, no symptoms, not positive, cannot return to school after five days with showing a negative test. She has to wait eight. The article states that CHOP says the need to preserve as much in-person schooling as possible as it outweighs the risk of infection to children and school staff at this stage of the pandemic. A lot of some Philadelphia and suburban schools have adapted this guidance from CHOP. More and more schools are focusing on, if you are sick, stay home for five days. You can get back to school, you can get back to work. But not our preschool. We are told that if you are not sick and you have proof that you are negative, you can still not return for eight days. Our district tells us the child can get tested on day five of their quarantine, and it's negative, then why can't our child return to school on day five? We have to wait another three days to return. We're not getting asked to get tested on day eight, so how does this make any sense? My preschool-aged nephew attending the Phelps Preschool and Childcare Center in New York has adapted the new five-day quarantine for close contacts without a test result. They go back on day six if no symptoms, no testing needing. I also want to super quickly talk about the K through 12 new guidelines. My elementary two are vaccinated, so this does not apply directly to us, but I wanted to advocate for those that it is. I find it very disturbing that if your child is a close contact and negative, you can return to school on day six, but day six through 10, you must leave school grounds, be signed out by an adult during lunch and recess. This is by far damaging a child's mental health. By doing this, the child will feel they are diseased, they are unwanted, they are not worthy to be at school. I can't imagine telling my child, you can return to school tomorrow, but you're not allowed to eat with anyone or play with anyone. These children are not sick, they were never even positive. After being home five days is enough. The CDC says after five days of quarantining, they recommend strict mask wearing at school. And guess what? We already do that at schools. Why can't the children eat six feet away from others?
Thank you, Ms. O'Gradyneck, that's been five minutes. I appreciate it.
Three more sentences.
I understand that, but we have to...
Why can't the child eat six feet away from others? And why can't the child play with a mask during recess? I think this is unnecessary. This is a perfect example of CHOP's David Rubin saying, we need to rethink what we're doing here.
I appreciate your comments.
Hi, my name is Nicole McKenna. My address is 135 East Browning Road in Collingswood. I too have three children in the Collingswood School District. I actually work for Nutriserve, so I help with the food service in the school district also in all the elementary schools. Um, and I just wanted to bring up a couple of points today. As far as COVID, any COVID concerns. Um, one thing I'm curious about is, I don't understand why teachers can use at-home tests, but families cannot. Uh, the government's issuing at-home tests for families, and outside testing can take days to schedule or even days to get results. So I don't understand why families can't use at-home tests. Also, um, just the communication about the COVID. I mean, honestly, I get a text every morning and an email every morning to fill out my COVID questionnaire. And then when my kids get to school, they have the principal standing outside, asking them the same questions that are on the questionnaire, but I have to take my time out every day to fill that out, when I know I can't send my kids to school if they have sick symptoms. And it's just a little bit of over-communication. Last week, I got three, three, three notifications that there was positive cases in my school. And none of those cases ended up being a close contact to any of my kids. But it caused me stress, wondering if they were. So why did I have to be contacted? But I'm getting these constant contacts all the time. And it causes families anxiety, all of this over-information. Moving on, um, I really would like to talk mostly about the, um, the curriculum. Because of COVID, the students are way behind due to remote schooling, and the half-days that we had last year took away from their learning time. And what I want to know is what adjustments the school district is making to the curriculum to help these students catch up. And also, I was interested in this, so I tried to look up the curriculum that's supposed to be posted on the school district website, and I couldn't find that information. So I don't know why that's not up there. Also, in January of 2020, Governor Phil Murphy signed, passed the Strengthening Gifted and Talented Education Act. And I want to know how are we expanding our gifted curriculum? Because I know I haven't seen any changes on the elementary level. And finally, I'm just, um, tired of hearing, when I voice my concerns about how the students are doing in school, and what are we doing to push them harder? Or getting them to catch up? All I hear back is, don't worry about it. And quite frankly, I am worried about it. And I'm tired of hearing, don't worry about it. And I know other families that are too. And for our family, with three children in the district, we are very much considering leaving the Collingswood School District to go to a private school so that they can get a better education. And I know I'm not the only one who's feeling this way. So I'm just wondering what kind of adjustments are being made to help these kids catch up. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ed Bosniak, I live at 348 Haddon Avenue. Bear with me here, public speaking has always been my weakness. I've chosen to speak tonight because I can no longer with good conscience sit idly by while we continue on this present course. While I understand that the CDC and New Jersey have guidelines and laws in place that make this extremely difficult to navigate, it is clear that this is not working. I know that you, with the school board, are operating strictly under these rules and guidelines. My question to you is, how are you challenging the state and the CDC? Who is thinking about the single parent or working parents who are being called 15 minutes before school that they are on a close contact quarantine? What about your own staff, being asked to field hundreds of often abusive communications from frustrated and desperate parents? What about our children, their social skills, interpersonal relationships? These kids need as much in-person instructional time as possible. We are falling behind in many ways and in the process putting our neighbors and community in impossible positions. Where is their support? I'm asking for you to take a stand, specifically, the quarantine times for preschool students regarding close contact are too long, they are creating unnecessary missed work time for both staff and students. The CDC guidelines that are intended to protect, however, have a few holes in them that seem to compromise safety when followed to the letter. I ask you to be more transparent, stand with and rally this community for a positive change before we fall further behind. We need to fight for both the rights of the parents who wish to remote school voluntarily, for the safety of their children, and for the rights of those who wish to challenge the CDC guidelines. We need to stop shuffling, shutting each other out with our frustrations and start the dialogue of finding solutions that work for us together. There must be a better way. Lastly, I'd like to address the folks who like to negatively comment on those speaking up for the rights of our children. I see all these signs on our lawns talking about bullying has no home here, yet we slam these people on social media. By doing this, you are effectively stifling the voices of others out of fear of facing your negativity. Please stop. Let's set a better, better example together. Thank you for your time.
I brought copies. It's okay. So... All right, I think we're good. All right. So Joe Rosato, 212 East Palmer Avenue, Collingswood. Uh, just so we're on the same page, uh, there is nothing compassionate about masking our children. Which leads me to, never in our history until now have children taken a bullet for their parents and adults. Parents and adults have always taken the bullet. Science and data show children, for the most part, are not in danger from COVID, yet are vaxxed and masked for not, not for themselves, but for adults. As a parent and a, excuse me, as a teacher and a parent, I am witnessing firsthand how our mask mandate is leading to depression, a decline in interpersonal skills, and most notably, fear in our children. There are numerous articles and testimonials from parents and teachers who see the mask mandate as a detriment to learning, as well as in societal skills like communication and collaboration. The following article titled, "I Am a Public School Teacher, the Kids Aren't Alright", written by teacher Stacy Lance, is an extremely powerful example of the harm of our mask mandates. Ms. Lance touches upon the devastating effects of learning loss and the mental health crisis that is ravishing our schools. Here is an excerpt. "The data about learning loss and the mental health crisis is devastating. Overlooked has been the deep shame young people feel. Our students were taught to think of their schools as hubs for infection and themselves as vectors of disease. This has fundamentally altered their understanding of themselves. In the last few weeks, nations across the globe, like the U K, Ireland, France, Spain, Thailand, and even Australia, are easing mask mandates. Spain's prime minister has actually stated, 'We need to perceive and understand COVID like the flu and live our lives accordingly.' Boris Johnson of the U K. was quoted, 'Masks don't work.' However, here at home, we are doubling down in a very confusing manner, literally. Colleges and universities are requiring double masks, even though the CDC has said our cloth masks are useless. As states in our nation also begin to end, to end mask mandates, I am opti, I am optimistic that here in New Jersey, in time, our school districts will also be given the option to, to end the mask mandate, where they may toe the party line and keep it in place. Let's hope that's not the case. I hope our superintendent and Board of Ed are open-minded and listen to other viewpoints regarding the devastating effects that these masks have on our children, and sincerely ask, are masks really in the best interest in the current and long-term mental and social and educational health of our children?" Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time?
Hello, John Heinzl, 21 Ardmore Terrace, Collingswood. Uh, so I appreciate the comments today. Superintendent, your, your comments about being kind, very, very important. I realize you have a difficult job, right? There's always gonna be somebody that's upset about something. You know, we all like to come here and voice our concerns. There was a lot of good comments from the people that came today. Um, one that was of particular interest to my wife and I is, uh, relative to advancement of our, of our children. Uh, our oldest is in third grade, um, doing well. Can't say enough about the staff, about, uh, newbie school in our case. Uh, really, really excellent. But we still feel that after half a year of first grade, some of, all of second grade, you know, limiting their time in school, that, that he's falling behind. Uh, handwriting, some of the normal skills. And we do indeed pay for tutors, uh, after, extracurricular math. Doing great in that, right? And those old times tables, doing division, long division, all this kind of stuff. But we still feel it's not enough. So, uh, to the Board of Education as our elected representation, people here, I'd like to ask if you would do us a favor and provide some additional, uh, insights and guidance on how we might collectively pursue some additional extracurricular tutoring or other activities like that, where people that so desire, I have no problem shelling out money, right? It, it's after school, I'm not expecting the teachers to do it. I'm not expecting, uh, anything else like that. But if there can be some group collaborative extra learning to those who are desiring to do so, maybe make use of the school spaces, whatever else, outdoors for all it matters, even though it's cold, kids will survive. But to give them some extra oppo-
But to give them some extra opportunity to learn, especially preschool and elementary school, where so many of those skills that set the foundation for greater learning in the future are forged there. I'm a PhD engineer. I've gone through schooling, and it never ends, right? And I recognize the criticality of all of the skills that you learn so early in life. And so I just want to make sure that we give that opportunity to our children. So I'd appreciate any insights and coordination that the Board could provide in representation of us, the people. Thank you.
Do we have any more public comment before Dr. McDowell was just going to mention one thing? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So Dr. Heinzel, thank you for your comment. Just, just for the record, we allocated pretty substantial funds this year for that very purpose. So all schools were given, not a blank check, but an opportunity to be able to identify ways to accelerate all students. All of those school applications are due February 1st. So I would expect, especially at Newbie, I know that Mr. Smith and the teachers are working on providing some additional extracurricular opportunities. We have grant funds that are actually going to pay for those, so we're not looking for families to shell out any additional resources. But exactly what you talked about, we acknowledge that there are some gaps that we need to fill. So we've allocated pretty substantial funds for the next two years in order to provide extra for families who want it. So please stay tuned with, with Mr. Smith and team.
Moving on to Section 8, the superintendent's report. Dr. McDowell.
Section 8.01 is the attached enrollment report. December of 2020, total enrollment was 2217. Enrollment as of December 2021 was 2259, and the requisite reports are attached. 8.02 is the emergency or safety drill report for the month of December that is also attached. And 8.03 is the December 2021 suspension report. And 8.04 is the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report leading up to this meeting, January 2022.
Thank you. We already did Section 9, the student reports, so that takes us to Section 10, the Business Administrator Board Secretary Report. Ms. Coleman.
Thank you. This evening, and Item 10.01 is your December monthly transfers. 10.02 is your Secretary and Treasurers Report and Cash Report. Item 10.03 is your Student Activities Cash Report. 10.04 is your Food Service Financial Statement for the month of December. 10.05 is the listing of the January 2022 purchase orders that have been issued. And then 10.06 is a listing of the bills that will be paid tomorrow morning. And since Mr. Craig is not here, I'm just going to roll into the Buildings, Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee Report. Just going to read the statement. "The Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvements district-wide." So Items 11.01 through 11.09 are those reports that I had just previously mentioned. 11.10 is a signature authorization. We're just changing, because my title changed and then my administrative assistant retired, and I have a new one. We're just changing that sign-off on the bank accounts. 11.11 is a contract with Edu Healthcare. This is another outside service provider that hopefully can help us fill some holes we have with getting instructional assistance in the district. 11.12 is the IDEA Grant Amendment, and that is bringing in the $82,764 in carryover funds. 11.13 is the ESEA Grant Amendment, and that is bringing in $67,564 in carryover funds for use. 11.14 is the Share custodial maintenance contract we have with the borough, where we will be cleaning the borough's new building from now until the end of June. 11.15 is an addendum for the lease with Oakland, and that's the preschool classroom that, the classrooms, excuse me, that we rent from Oakland. We currently rent 2,390 square feet from the Oakland Board of Ed for preschool. 11.16 is an increase in state aid. Those of you who heard around two, two and a half years ago with the Alyssa's Law, the panic buttons, where we all had to install them. It took the legislature a little while. We complied with everything we needed to do to get the grants, but it took us them two and a half years to fund us. So we have been, they are going to refund us the $119,000. So, and it is, usually I can't increase our budget, but it is one of the exemptions. So I can increase the budget for unbudgeted state aid. So we am going to increase that. And then the funds that I'm bringing in, we are going to use for some facility work in every building in the school district. 11.17 is just us joining the inter-local purchasing system. This is just another purchasing co-op. And specifically this month, we had a hard time finding cafeteria tables that we could get timely enough and cheap. And every time we got to quote them, the price jumps. This co-op actually had the tables that we want, and we can actually maybe get them by June, and there's about $10,000 less. So I don't have wood in front of me, but. 11.18 is revised shared service agreements with the Oakland Public School District in the areas of technology, administration, and preschool staff. 11.19 is to approve the quote for the redoing the Zayn North front steps in the amount of $35,000. That's going to be paid for with SDA funds, so there's no effect on the budget. 11.20 is a listing of textbooks to be disposed of. And that is also Items 11.02 through 11.20.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Do I have a motion? And a second? Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera? Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharon Celia? Mr. Stotts? And Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 12, the Curriculum Committee. Ms. Henry, can you present, please?
The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs, and the school calendar. Item 12.02 to 12.03 are elementary and middle school field trips, which there are none at this time. Item 12.04 is for the recommendation of one high school field trip. 12.05 and 12.06 are out-of-district placements and home instruction. 12.07 is our contract with the Camden County College High School Plus Program. And 12.08 is the English language learning three-year plan required by the state. So tonight, we're seeking approval of Items 12.02 through 12.08.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve these items? And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello? Ms. Rivera? Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharon Celia? Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except item 12.02 where I abstained.
And Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Section 13, the Personnel Committee. Ms. Sharon Celia, will you present, please?
The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. Seeking approval of the following items on the agenda. 13.02 is a rescinded contract. 13.03 is a resignation. 13.04 is a rescinded contract. A revised contract are found at 13.05 through 13.09. Revised contracts, I believe. I may have misspoke there. 13.10 is a paid leave. 13.11 is a revised contract. 13.12, another revised contract. 13.13 is extending a contract to a systems data coordinator. 13.14, contract for a 10-month preschool secretary. 13.15 is a long-term replacement for social studies teacher. 13.16, 2022 permanent building substitute nurse. 13.17, an elementary long-term substitute nurse. 13.18, the 2021, 2022 elementary lunchtime playground assistants. 13.19, psychology interns. Nice bunch of young people coming in. 13.20, and 13.21, our Buildings and Grounds employees. 13.22, high school staff PLC leaders. 13.13 is a contract for district bus drivers. 13.24 is a revision to reflect the change of the minimum wage to $13 per hour, which was effective January 1st. 13.25 is 2021 high school non-athletic EDP stipends. 13.26 is the 2021, 2022 winter athletic event personnel. 13.27, the student teachers and practicum placements. 13.28 at the agenda is for substitutes and tutors. 13.29 is the travel expense form. At this time, there is no travel expenses to approve. So tonight, I'm seeking approval of section, of Items 13.02 to 13.28.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve these items?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
I do have a question about 13.22. I noticed that the, it's the PLC leaders. I noticed that the child site team, there's an opening there. Is there someone filling in, in the moment? Is that something that needs to be done while you're, y'all are looking for a leader to take that position?
Yes, a member of the leadership team will fill in the gap.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera? Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharon Celia? Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where I abstained.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Section 14 is policies and regulations. And normally, Ms. Severino would be presenting, but we don't have anything at this time because that committee has not met yet. But we will be shortly. So moving on to Section 15, miscellaneous. 15.01 is the, our previous month's HIV report. And 15.02 is a CEA sidebar agreement. And Dr. McDowell, could you just tell us what that is real quick? Ms. Coleman, just kidding.
Sorry, I wanted to pull it up. We were approached by the CEA. We have some staff that have come to us, as we've been saying over and over, staffing is a premium and trying to find qualified people. We have some that are taking the alternate route or need to, I guess, go through the paperwork to get their advanced standing and so forth and so on. And there's extra costs, sometimes with coursework that currently isn't covered in the CEA contract. And we want to keep our staff, especially staff that we recently hired, maybe as a long-term sub, and they're working towards CERTS. So with all of the money we're getting from the federal government through ARC and the ESAR funds, the CEA reached out because these folks wouldn't be eligible under the typical tuition reimbursement clause in the CEA contract. The CEA reached out to see if it would be possible for the next two years while we have the extra federal funds to reimburse these staff members for the extra cost for classes so they can get the proper CERTS to be approved by the county office to continue to work in the Collingswood School District. So I met with them. I drafted this up, and I actually think it's a really good idea because, like I said, staffing is a premium, and we want to, we want to help them, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that got clarified for everyone. So we have, so a motion to approve Items 15.01 and 15.02. Do I have a motion? Sorry. Second.
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera? Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharon Celia? Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
And Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 16. This is our second opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss any items which you would like to. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes, and any clarifying communications will go out later in the week. And any more general concerns will be discussed in future board committee meetings. So if anyone would like to make a comment, they can come up and please state your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Hello again, Joe Rosato. I don't know if you received this. This is from a friend of mine. Couldn't be here today, so I'm using his words, but I'm sure he'll appreciate it. He wrote, "My unaddressed concerns that may come across more clearly in an email, as I'm always open to communication. So if any of you would like to speak with me or email me, feel free to reach out. And if you want, I can let you know who this person is. The current concern I address was all of our children being harmed socially, emotionally, and/or physically, wearing masks day after day, month after month. This has been never done before. Are we sure this is safe? Who is studying this? I see children every day breathing in wet masks, and I see children putting their wet masks on the ground and then putting the mask back on their face. According to the CDC, a wet mask is harder to breathe through and less efficient at filtering germs. What is happening to our younger children whose lungs are still developing? This concerns me greatly. Do we have an exit plan for masks? Testing, going remote, and vaccines? I am not against these tools. This is my friend, not me. And I feel they are necessary at times. I am concerned that these tools will become habits and a normal part of life, never to go back to the toolbox. What is the metric used to justify the use of these tools? Is it hospitalization and death? I think they are legitimate reasons for them. But if the metric is just cases with no hospitalizations or death, I don't think these tools are necessary, and we should resume life as normal. Using hospitalizations and death as an indicator is justification for the use of these tools. Using just cases is creating fear and panic. About a month ago, I saw a scientist from South Africa say Omicron was very contagious, yet mild like a cold. I saw this article at the beginning of a Christmas break. That in South Africa, they lift curfew as Omicron wave subsides rapidly with minimal COVID hospital admissions, and Delta killed off. Expect the same in other countries. I thought this was great, good news. And then I heard about Omicron in our mainstream and local news. It sounded like a monster. I caught a local news program in the middle of Christmas break. I caught a local news program in the middle of Christmas break, you would have felt the world was ending. I know four people right now who had COVID over break, all were vaccinated, and three were very mild, and the other had symptoms like the flu. Why is South Africa's news optimistic and ours terrifying? Despite low vaccination rates around 26%, they seem to get through Omicron with little trouble and seemingly no fear or panic. What makes South Africa different? Do they have a healthier lifestyle, better diet, more outdoor exercise? Why weren't their experts, the news outlets, scaring everyone into thinking they will all die? Most people have an over 99% survival rate. I know testing vaccines are making a lot of money right now, politicians have more power than ever because of the pandemic. News outlets make money by having viewers. Will they exaggerate and promote fear to keep viewers? Who pays the media to tell us this news? How much money in advertising are they getting for promoting these tools? Demacron and Floron are coming into the scene now, how will they be portrayed? I don't want money, political, political power, or media profit to be the reasons of all this continues. I do want to follow the science, and I hope you can make sure that this is what's happening. Make sure we are using these tools for true danger. Make sure we are using these tools for true danger? Do not, yeah, I guess that's right. Do not allow fear to cloud reality. I'm not saying it's time to stop using all the tools right now, I'm just saying, let's ask, why are we using them, and let's use them correctly at a correct time? And he gives an examples about throwing ice on, on salt, you don't do it, throwing salt on ice, you don't do it every single day, you just do it when it's necessary. From the sounds of it, we will have to live with COVID like we do with the flu. Luckily, COVID seems to be less dangerous for the general population like the flu at the moment, if we are to believe what has happened in South Africa. Please make sure these tools are used properly when needed and put them away when the job is over. You represent the community, and I hope you ask tough questions to the people giving you tools to use, not just taking orders. Please ask, what is being used for? To lower cases or stop hospitalizations and death? Will this tool cause more harm than good, or is it unknown? We have to push a little if we want this pandemic to end. Thank you for your time, sincerely, my buddy.
Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Seeing no one standing up, I will just say thank you to everyone that came to, came out tonight to express their concerns. We know this is a tough, this is a difficult time for all of us, including us with kids in the schools and dealing with quarantine and close contact protocols as well. I did just want to reiterate or double-check with Dr. McDowell that all of the protocols that we discuss tonight are coming from, directly from the New Jersey Department of Health, and we are, we are being instructed to follow what the New Jersey Department of Health tells us, both for preschool quarantines and K-12 quarantines. Is that correct?
That's correct. So they, they all filter down, starting with the CDC, and then they are then interpreted for New Jersey's purposes, and then are then disseminated through the New Jersey Department of Health.
And so would it be our discretion to say we don't agree with these and we're not going to follow them?
We are a quasi-government entity, and it would not be advisable. The words from the Department of Health, and I quote, "Failure to adhere to the recommendations from the Department of Health, you are on your own." That's pretty much what they, they told us. You're, you're on your own. They do have the authority to shut down schools or even the school district if things get out of hand.
And because of a lot of the mitigation strategies that we have in place, we have been able to avoid shutdowns from the Department of Health.
That is correct.
So as Dr. McDowell said at the beginning, and I know Board members have expressed before, just wanted to reiterate our, our thanks to everyone in the district, the staff, the, the teachers, to parents for hanging in with all of it. This has been a really tough couple of years, and hopefully we are close to, to being through it. With that, we will move to Section 17, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?